Six o'clock, we're gonna get started. So, welcome to the East Hampton Ordnance Committee Meeting of, well, let's take a look. When is this? It's number 28. And we are holding this meeting remotely for an extended order from Governor Baker to hold meetings remotely under the open meeting law. And tonight, I can, let me see, I have some more people coming in, so I'm gonna let people in. Gwen, thanks for joining us. I know that the EDIC had some stuff you wanted to discuss. And so, in order to use the, make sure we're in compliance with the open meeting law, we got you guys on the agenda, so we can hear what you guys are looking for. And so, I don't know how many of the, how many of your folks you have. Are we waiting for anybody? Or are we in a good spot to get started?
I've got Cassie Akoff here from EDIC, who's been working quite diligently on this proposal that is still in draft form. So, uh, we, we might have other people show up. I can't say for sure.
Wasn't Chris gonna join?
He was. He's not here. That's okay.
Okay.
So, Cassie, you made a couple of slides just to give a quick overview of the kinds of things we're thinking about.
That's correct.
Would you be interested in, in sharing those?
I would. Can I share my screen?
I'm, I just made, I gave you the capability to share your screen.
Okay. I have not done this in Zoom.
And before, but maybe while you're, while you're getting that set up, I do this every single time. I gotta start reminding myself. I'm gonna put a little rubber band on. So, um, before we get started, is there anybody from the public that has anything to say before we get started? That's about something that is not on the agenda. Don't want to forget about public speak time. And I guess I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna extend that for a couple of seconds, just to, for Keith is just joining, so he wouldn't have heard that announcement. So, I'm gonna, okay, so it looks like it's audio connected. So, and we're getting more people into, so I guess it's good that I had a little lapse there. So, we'll let, let these folks in. So, for those of you just joining, if you have anything that you'd like to say in public speak time that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak now to any item that is not on the agenda. Okay. Seeing none? All right, Cassie, I think we're, we're good to go.
Oops. Oh, no. There we go. I can do this. I know I can. Because I graduated from high school. Here we go. We started thinking about the vacant storefront issue. It was before COVID, actually. And so, the spirit of this whole endeavor has been to, and I'm not gonna read these out loud, because you guys can read, but to preserve the vitality of East Hampton's business districts, businesses that are vacant, especially if they're rundown, can make the city less inviting. And, um, so that some buildings that we know are vacant are also in condemnable conditions. So, so basically, the bottom line is we wanted to protect the welfare and economic vitality of, of East Hampton. Something I think we all wanted to. So, here's the nuts and bolts. And please remember that this is a draft and that we're still kind of tossing some of these ideas around. To come up with this draft, we benchmarked the city of Arlington, town of Arlington in Eastern Mass. It has a vacant storefront bylaw in place, and they vigilantly actually enforce it. So, we've modeled hours after their learning. So, in this proposal, as it's now written, property owners have to register vacant storefronts, and when doing so, they pay a registration fee. If they fail to register, they incur a, this is now drafted, daily fine. This fee can be waived if they install public art, if they demonstrate financial hardship, or that they can demonstrate a real good faith effort to lease the property. Property owners are required to post contact information at the vacant property in a way that wouldn't be destroyed by the weather, and includes things like the name, address, phone number, emergency contact information. And also, under these rules, the vacant property is subject to periodic inspection. And that, in a nutshell, is what we've been talking about. I'm happy to answer questions or share discussion.
I'll follow up with that by saying that our, our primary interest in coming to you as ordinance committee is we, as, as this group of people making up EDIC have not done this process before of getting to you at an idea of some language that you might be interested in deploying to the city. And so, I, as the chair, I'm interested in knowing what communication you might expect from us in drafting the rest of this. Like, what, what should our process be? And are there any process pitfalls that we should look out for as we move forward?
That's a great question. And, and I think that, you know, it's, it's relatively, it's relatively simple. Since this isn't, um, a zoning change, you know, this is, this would just be an ordinance that would be, you know, applied to vacant storefronts. You know, one, you'd need a sponsor from the council. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure one of us would be able to sponsor this to bring it forward to the full council, where it would then get referred to committee. And what we'd want is we'd want, you know, probably something a little bit more developed than this, some draft language for the ordinance and, you know, just a little bit more detail, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be a completed finished product. Because that's, that's something that, you know, we could, as through deliberations and public meetings, we could hone in on, on some of the things. So, uh, it's really, it's, you know, once that happens, it would come to our committee, and we would discuss it in meetings and, you know, recommend or not recommend a final product to the full council, where it would then go for a public hearing.
Okay. And is there any reason why, in the process of drafting this, it is a, a good or a bad idea to share some of our preliminary ideas with business owners who might fall into a category of having a vacant storefront? Is that, that's, you're giving a thumbs up, Owen. So, what, what, tell me more.
Yeah, I mean, I think that my experience with introducing any measure to the council, but is to just get, get as, think of anybody potentially who, who an ordinance could, could affect. And so, certainly in this case, it's the business community. But just try to like, leave no stone unturned. I mean, I could speak from personal experience with having introduced certain things with all the best intentions and then thinking like, oh, here's five stakeholders that I just didn't follow up with. But I think that's the best way to, to arrive at a, at a, the most finished draft that you could introduce. I mean, I think unless there's a rush with this too, I'd say like, try to, try to kind of polish the product as best you can before it gets to the committee. So, there's, you know, minimal deliberation or debate. And, uh, but absolutely, I think that's, that's a great way to go about this, is talking to business owners.
Yeah, and I mean, at minimum, you're gonna figure out where the fault lines are, right? Like, it's not that necessarily you're going to come up with something that it turns out has 100% of support from everyone, but you'll at least figure out like, who really supports this? Who might be a little bit nervous about it? What's their reason for being a little bit nervous? Have you had a chance to sort of address that? And you just get a better sense of, I mean, I just feel like if, if you have those preliminary conversations, then when it comes to actually having, you know, these official conversations, you know, there, at least maybe the parties understand each other a little bit better. So.
Okay, and that is part of the process that EDIC should go through before we get stuff to council?
I mean, I think
I'm seeing hesitation.
Well, it would be, I think it would be a great start. I, I don't think that, you know, it doesn't have to be completely vetted before it comes to us, you know, because that, that can be part of the process that kind of we go through as well. But I think it, it does make sense to make sure, you know, I mean, it, like, this is kind of easy, because you can literally identify every vacant storefront in East Hampton. And then you can, so it's pretty easy to get a gauge of where the stakeholders are at. You talk to their neighbors and you talk to them. And we'll have a pretty good idea. I mean, I, my, my guess off, you know, off the top of my head is that people that own vacant storefronts are probably gonna be resistant to it, because it's gonna cost them money. Potentially, I mean, you know, like, we've had, we have some, you know, perpetually delinquent, empty storefronts. You know, right, right on our main streets. So, th- those people are not obviously in a, in a big hurry to, to solve this problem. But I think the intent of this and the spirit of this is great, because this might like, this might be the catalyst that gets those people to do something with their property, which I think would be better for East Hampton. Counselors there?
Oh, I was just gonna add, Counselor Derby, that they might not be in a big hurry or scurry to
Oh, man, you got that one. Actually, I did hear that something was going there, so who knows?
That's useful, because that, that currently is our thinking to, in particular, identify, uh, we've been calling sort of the frequent flyers, but that, talking to their neighbors about that as well is, is a valuable piece of input. I think I'm, I'm just trying to find the balance between what, what part of that needs to be in the process of drafting a proposal before it gets a sponsor and gets considered by city council, and what part of that is subject to public meetings and stuff. I, I suppose it's a little of both.
I think I would, I would say it's a little of both. And, you know, you, you might want to do, you know, a little groundwork, just, you know, it may be informal discussions, just to let people know what's coming down the pike. And I would say, um, you know, a great resource, I don't know, and I'm sure you probably have thought of this, but, you know, Jeff Bag, our planner, could be a really good resource for this type of thing, just because I imagine that he, this has been on his mind as well. And he might have some other resources that could be beneficial or helpful. And, and you know, and I think that, you know, our committee can, as, once this comes into the committee, you know, we, we would be happy to, to do some of this legwork as well, and, and to make sure that we, you know, are gonna come up with a, a finished product that is, you know, a good fit for East Hampton.
Okay, cool. So, I think that's very helpful. And yeah, Jeff is, is our city hall member of our committee. So, at our next meeting, we'll have opportunities to get him involved in, in more specific ways. Cool. Anything else we should know? What's a pitfall? You got a pitfall I should know about?
I mean, yeah, go ahead, Owen. Why don't you take this one?
Yeah, I mean, I think just, uh, kind of be prepared for all the questions you might get asked. And, you know, I think you've already addressed one of the potential pitfalls. I mean, you're talking about speaking to the, 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 the people who will be impacted by this, which is property owners. So, you know, hopefully, maybe you can even get some, some supporters of this. I mean, you might be surprised how many landlords may actually like this idea in one way or another. So, but I think that's the biggest thing, is just making sure you're, you're, you're vetting it well. And it sounds like you already thought about that.
And the only thing I would add to that is, someone's dog. There you go. That's, the only thing I would add is, the, the landowners that this is going to affect, they're gonna take it personally. So, or they can take it personally. I shouldn't say they're going to. They could take it personally. And if it's gonna affect their wallet, they could potentially, it could trigger some emotion. So, just to be prepared for that potential. I've seen that happen in the past. And, you know, people can get passionate, and sometimes rightly so, and sometimes not rightly so. But just be aware, that's a potential.
Yeah, okay. Useful. Cassie, you got anything else that we should bring back to our crew?
Um, we were wondering if there had been an instance in which East Hampton had implemented a rule for landlords, a business, for business landlords, um, something that we could model after. There wasn't collective memory in our group. Perhaps there is here.
It's a good question. I, I think, let me sit on that for a second and
The one that we could come up with was the idea of rezoning, like, the cottage area streets, so that you couldn't have residential on the first floor. But that was the most recent that we could think of. And that was like 40 years ago.
And which we actually changed that recently to allow, like, I think the back half to, for artists and whatnot. That was maybe two years ago, but, um, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Okay, good. Let us know if you think of anything.
Sounds good. And I'm gonna, I'll, I'll keep you, how about this? How about I keep you guys on the agenda? So, if, while you guys are fact finding and, and writing and stuff, if you want to come back and, and bounce anything off of us, you know, that way, you can do that without us having to submit it first, you know? So, we still have you, so you can ask more questions if you need them, if the need arises.
Cool.
I mean, and, and I would just say that, um, we would just wanna, you know, we, we don't want to get in too much of the weeds. But if you, if you find, you know, like, for example, questions like, have there been things? And we think of something, we, you know, so we can invite you back and answer that question for you, just to be helpful. But, okay, so, all right, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
Evening.
You too. All right, so we can move into some of our other stuff. We have, um, now, Owen, do we, where are we at with the Juneteenth? Do we want to jump into plastics first, or do you want to talk about the Juneteenth?
I mean, like I said, it's, it's, well, it's almost October. I'm in, not necessarily in any rush with that. I think between plastics, and I think Counselor Peak's got this really, you know, interesting and valuable zoning amendment. I'm not, it's up to you, chairman, but I'm not, I, I don't have, I don't think that's the priority from my perspective.
That's, that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to, because it is in, in order that is there. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm happy to, to jump into plastics real quick, because I know Jeff is planning on coming. I think that he was not gonna be able to come until a little bit later. Um, and so, and I, you know, I think it's valuable to have him here when we start talking about the zoning amendments. And so, why don't we jump into some plastics? And I know that we have some new language around from the Board of Health that isn't more in line with the way that they do enforcement. So, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, let me find that really quick. I apologize.
I can, I can, if you want me, I can find it too.
Yeah, I think I have it here. Sorry. Plastics fans. Yeah, I think this, I have it. So, and, uh, so I met with the Board of Health, and I, I clarified this with you, Mr. Chairman, too. So, since the, since this item was on the agenda, we can kind of, we can introduce relevant language to the ordinance directly to the committee. So, after our last revision, I met with the Board of Health about the deferment process, and they said, oh, wait a second. This language doesn't, isn't completely parallel to how we manage these types of things. They were potential, they were specifically concerned about the economic, the, being able to demonstrate economic hardship, that they thought that that would be too arbitrary and capricious, and I get that. So, they generally deal more with what's called variances, instead of deferments, or, or to something, you know, variances. The exemptions are already outlined in the ordinance itself. So, they kind of gave me some language, which they, they still need to kind of meet on and discuss. But I can kind of show this to y'all really carefully, if there's, quickly, I'm sorry if there's any questions. And I think they're meeting next week. And so, for our next meeting, we could probably get final feedback. It's, it, it doesn't look too complicated to me. Do you want me to just share that really fast?
Sure. And, and, you know, I think the, kind of historically, understanding, like, this was something that we had discussed with the health agent. But when the language got to the board, that's where we found, so, a little bit of a discrepancy. So, I, I think this is a good, a good thing to, to take care of now.
Yeah, and they were all really helpful, and it was a good conversation. So, let me, let me try to figure this out here. Hold on. Here we go. Okay, can you all see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess, um, I could just, do you want me to read it, or? Or do you want to look at it really quickly?
I think, I mean, I think we can just take a quick look and just make sure that we are comfortable with it. I don't think you necessarily have to read it.
I mean, it made sense to me. And at the end of the day, they're enforcing body. And so, whatever way they think is gonna be the easiest way of doing this, then, that, that's fine. And there's some notes in the end, you'll see too.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, it seems pretty straightforward. Counselor Peak, do you have any questions on this?
I'm a slow reader, but
Sorry. No, no rush, no rush, no rush.
I am, uh,
High comprehension, slow reading. That's okay.
Exactly. I'm like, takes me forever to read, but I do remember stuff. Yeah, no, I mean, this makes enough sense. And just because I don't have it right in front of me. This process, basically, someone would apply for a variance to the ordinance if it didn't work. And this would, this would replace, like, the exemption language we had before.
Okay, you got it. Yeah. And then, I think one thing I really want to say, certainly publicly here, is that the goal of this is to be better environmental stewards and not to be draconian. And so, we want businesses to succeed with this. We don't want to be, we don't want to penalize them. And so, you know, talking to the board, and certainly in talking to the health agent, the goal is to kind of shepherd people through this process, because I'm sure it's gonna be confusing for some people. Some, some businesses in town are basically already doing what we recommend. And I think some are not, are gonna have a lot of questions. And so, you know, we, we want to make people successful, you know, in order to reduce plastic waste. And to that end, too, one thing I'd like to suggest to this body, and kind of in consideration of a lot of things, and, and one of them certainly being the pandemic, which has really stretched thin our, our health department is, is, we already decided that, we already pushed back the start date of the ordinance to January 1st, 2022. But I would also recommend language that basically gives businesses like a year to come into compliance. And that will allow some of these conversations to be had about exactly what this is gonna look like. And, you know, draw attention to, to other businesses that are, that are demonstrating practices that we're looking for. And I think just in talking to the Board of Health, too, even though we passed this almost a year ago at this point, there's just been so much going on that, you know, we had talked about doing education like six months ago, and we just haven't gotten there yet. So, if that makes, I don't know if that makes sense to you?
Yeah, I think it does. Um, I'm almost thinking a tiered approach might, you know, like, but I guess, just to keep it simple, a year. You know, because plastic bags, like, that particular piece has been, I mean, we passed the original plastic bag ordinance, like, almost three years ago now, at this point, you know, so. But I, I, I understand the impact of COVID, so I'm willing to be flexible, even though my heart says, let's get this going. Okay, uh, yeah, no, it seems, that seems good. And, and Counselors, are you think that the Board of Health is gonna take another look at this language at their meeting? And should, uh, like, approve it, or, or let us know where they're at with it, so we can start moving it back into the commit, into the full council?
Yeah, they're meeting next week. Uh, and so, hopefully, we can meet sometime in October to kind of just finalize a few things and maybe bring everything to a hearing, either maybe the second October meeting, or probably the first meeting in November, because I think there's already a lot of stuff going on for the second October meeting.
Yeah.
So.
I think there is. Um, okay, no, that sounds, that sounds like a, a good plan. Now, at the last meeting, at the, and also at the last full council meeting, I invited people to come to give, uh, testimony or, or their input or thoughts on, uh, kind of the revised straw piece. And so, if there's anybody in, on the Zoom that would like to speak to that piece, the, the, specifically to the straw piece, then I think this would be a good time to do that. I don't know if anybody is here for that portion of the meeting. But if you are, you feel free to just, there's, I think there's only five extras besides us on the committee. So, if you want to just unmute and let us know, that'd be, that'd be great. Omar.
Counselor Gomez. Thank you, Mr.
Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing good. Um, yes, I, sadly, I don't see that many people here about the straw, right? Especially when we spent almost an hour in the full city council talking about it. I do, was reading a lot, a lot of statements in different places in the internet. I do appreciate the homework the Councilor Sarah did for us, bringing forward all the information that he did. But I do still have some concerns, especially putting the burden on the disability community to act for somebody that they need, right? And while we passed that amendment last time, I've been going to different places. And, um, every time that I, that I think, like, a disabled person, I have more questions in, in my head, right? Like, going to the Pokeball, when you go and order one of those Bobo, Bubba, I don't know how you call that, drinks, they came with the plastic. So, now I, I should be required, I need to request the, uh, the, the straw, if, if this pass, if we pass this again. Same with the milkshakes, right? If you go to Montom, now you have to request that, to, to drink your, your, um, your milkshake. And, and if I can keep going and going and going for different type of drinks, that people now probably have to act for it. And my biggest concern is how we're gonna put the burden in a, in a disability community to act for it. And I, and I, and I think you guys know more than anyone, the, how much the environment is so important for me. I think the environment, I, I didn't write the ordinance, this, uh, Councilor's, uh, Derby wrote about the hybrid electric cars in our city. But I'm pretty sure I was one of the, one that forced to stop to buy in the pickup truck for the DPW when they don't need it. And to, to push a lot to the police department to get a hybrid car, right? So, I, I still have those concerns. And something that I did, and I think he is here, because I read a statement from Grayson on the internet, and I contacted him to see if we can hear some of the other part of the story of the, of the disability. And, uh, I, I know he's in the, in the, on the call, but I don't know if, if he want to talk.
Yeah, um, I, I would be happy to share some info, and I will turn on my video with the caveat that I am in the middle of moving. And I apologize for the mess behind me, even though I've blurred it. It'll just be a fun mess. So, I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Gomez inviting me here, and just wanted to share some information with you all. I have been doing disability advocacy for the last decade, a little over a decade. Oh, God, okay. And have worked with independent living centers, have worked with nonprofit organizations, and currently work for the Wisconsin Department of Health and the Chronic Disease Prevention Program. And in Madison, Wisconsin, we actually, there was an ordinance similar to this that had been talked about back in 2019. And there were a number of issues that popped up with that. But I, I, I wrote up some stuff to read, just, just as a statement, and I can forward this on via Mr. Gomez as well. If, if y'all would like the actual text. But, um, so I, again, I appreciate being able to be here. And just wanted to provide some background. So, um, the, the plastic bendy straw was actually first invented for people who were disabled and dealing with a variety of health issues, polio, pneumonia, et cetera. Before these straws were invented, we died. Before these straws were invented, we died. Those of us who had disabilities and couldn't drink, we died. There, there's no nice way to put that. We aspirated on the liquid, we got pneumonia, we, you know, got worse and worse and would die. Horrible, horrible deaths. And I am concerned, um, that there seems to be this interesting juxtaposition between disabled folks and the environment in, in a number of different fields. You know, we could talk about like flushable wipes. We could talk about a number of things, but, um, the straw was the plastic bendy straw, right? Like was specifically invented for those of us who have disabilities. And there are a number of unintended consequences that ordinances like this are going to pose. And here's just a couple of them. So, you know, there are a variety of people with disabilities who rely on straws to consume any food or beverage. And without those straws, you're not going to be able to have them access spaces within the city, which is a direct violation of the ADA. Um, and I know that there's, there's the ability to ask for them and I will, I will, uh, address that momentarily. Putting the responsibility right on the customer to request a straw. It's not empowerment, it's not giving somebody the ability to necessarily advocate for what they need. Um, it creates this opt-in system and it places burden on folks. Cause the straw here is, is an accommodation. We wouldn't say the same thing. We wouldn't ask somebody to ask for a ramp before they enter a building, right? We wouldn't ask somebody to ask for an elevator to be built on a building that has multiple floors and it, it seems awkward to ask somebody to ask for a straw in this kind of a situation. Many disabilities that necessitate the use of straws are invisible. They, um, are not obvious. And so in situations where somebody might have to opt in to ask for a straw, you are going to run into regardless of how much you educate and try to reaffirm that people are not supposed to be gatekeeping anything. Anybody who asks for a glass of straw should have one, et cetera, et cetera. You are going to run into people who say, you don't need a plastic straw. Why can't you use this one? Why can't you use that one? Trust me, I know because again, in Madison, we did this. And it did not go well. I stopped being able to go to restaurants. As somebody who relies on straws, I have an issue with my esophagus and, um, up until maybe the last six months, going through a ton of physical therapy and a number of other things that are generally inaccessible to folks. I couldn't drink anything without a straw, without coughing up. I couldn't keep liquids down, et cetera. So, uh, this is something that I've dealt with personally. Another thing that I would like to bring up is materials that are used in alternative straws. Create unintended consequences. Um, so alternatives are made with ingredients that contain things like corn, gluten, other major allergens. Those can be used in the straw themselves. They can be used in the glue on the straws, such as like paper straws. And those kinds of items, there are not regulations in place nationwide that state that those kinds of allergens have to be disclosed. And so you've, you have people, um, you know, back in 2019, when this was kind of all the rage going to Starbucks, not realizing that, that the straw contains something they're allergic to. People deciding, you know, other people deciding, oh, well, nobody's going to have an allergic reaction to this without knowing anything about allergies. And I've had a friend go into anaphylaxis because of this. There is very little research about how many people who have various allergies have reactions to straws too. And so there's not enough data to do that kind of thing safely. So, um, the, another thing that I do want to point out as well, um, a lot of the other materials, you have things like metal straws. Metal straws are unsafe for a number of reasons. They are potential allergy risks, there are injury risks. Back in 2018, uh, and, and I'm only citing this one because it's obvious and there's news articles around it. A woman who was disabled and using a metal straw, um, actually died because she got impaled on the straw. And so for those of us who have movement related conditions, that's incredibly unsafe. These things are not flexible. They're not safe with hot liquid, hard to sanitize. They're expensive, right? Paper, I don't know how many of you have used paper straws, but if you try to use them in hot liquid, like for those of us who need to use straws with any sort of nutritional item that we intake, right? That's not an alternative that's going to work. Um, and I actually, there's a, there's a really great, um, illustration in the stuff that I will send, uh, over. But there's a number of problems with every alternative type of straw. The disability community has outlined this ad infinitum across social media, across news articles, NPR, The Atlantic, everything. And so there's a ton of data out there. Um, and I, I think the other thing that is difficult here, um, straw bands don't really do much to address environmental issues. And neither do plastic bag bands. And I know that that's hard to hear because we want, we want it to be true. We want to feel like we can have an impact, but the, the reality is that single use plastics that are used by the public are the tiniest slice of a much bigger and much more complex conversation. According to a 2018 report about different corporations contributing to plastic pollution. The top polluting companies included Coca-Cola, PepsiCo, Nestle, Mars and, uh, Unilever. And the issue that shifted, um, the discussion around plastics and recycling, um, from being an onus on companies because it was quite a long time ago. In, in the fifties, a number of these same companies got together and coined the term litter bug, started a Keep America Beautiful campaign after they were being blamed for, um, you know, things that weren't being recycled.
So Grayson, I'm going to just stop you real quick there. And I'm just gonna, thanks so much for that. Um, I appreciate it. Uh, I'm just wondering, have you had a chance to read, uh, what was proposed? Putting forward.
I have not had a chance to, to fully dig into it as much as I would like to. My understanding is that these are straws that are available by request. And again, I addressed that by stating that it's, it's putting the onus on somebody to ask for an accommodation, one. And two, as somebody with like anxiety, you know, uh, telling me to ask for something that I need at a restaurant puts a different kind of, uh, pressure and onus on me. And there's a lot of research that talks about the difficulties of interacting with people who are again, potentially going to gatekeep your need for, for something that is an accessibility tool and has always been an accessibility tool. Just, just because a bunch of able people also realize they could use plastic straws doesn't negate the fact that this has always been an accessibility tool.
Yeah, uh, thanks. Thanks a lot for that. I appreciate it. Um, you know, I, I think this is, this is, uh, something that we've been grappling with. Uh, and I would say that, uh, the version of, uh, what we have right now, I feel like addresses a lot of what you were talking about.
Can I ask for that to be shared on the screen so that we can all read that then?
Yep. Counselor's there.
So Grayson, first of all, I really appreciate you sharing your, your personal experience as well as your professional experience. So a lot of, a lot of the concerns that you raised, or I think most of the concerns that you raised were what helped or what helped inform the policy that we wrote. So in the pro, there was, there are a few different, uh, kind of components to writing this policy. Uh, one of them was just kind of doing a lot of reading and, um, it, uh, and, and reading articles that basically hit on some of the key points you hit on. And, and, and certainly the fir- first and foremost, that we were certainly not going to entertain a plastic straw ban because of everything you just said and, and not going to entertain really compostable only materials or bring your own for the exact same reasons you said. Plastic straws need to be available, uh, to the public at large, certainly those who need them to consume liquids. But really to be any, to anyone who wants to be able to enjoy them. So without going into too lengthy, because we talked about the last meeting, but I could just kind of summarize. In terms of the ADA concerns, there was some substantial, uh, legal analysis that, that we did around this. There's a couple of legal briefs in the, of the, um, the materials that were submitted to the council, which I can bring up. And we talked with the state, the Massachusetts Office on Disability, kind of around this from the legal framework. And they didn't have any concerns, both in regards to the nature of a universal opt-in or non-automatic inclusion, um, both in terms of the policy itself as well as, um, disclaimer or disclosure. Going a little further, obviously the important thing was to discuss with people, uh, disability advocates like yourself and, and disability organizations around these topics. And so two things, uh, two items kind of stuck out to me. One was the discussion around basically the same policy in New York City, where initially they were proposing an outright ban. And, um, the environmental groups worked with a disability group, uh, one called Yanafazaka, to kind of come up with a policy that would satisfy the need for, um, environmental stewardship and plastic reduction as well as meeting the needs of those with disabilities. And, uh, just as a quick aside too, I was trying to dig up some, um, data, like you mentioned about reduction, at least just from one article. It did say that with, with straws on request, um, there's potentially a 40% reduction in straw use. So I, I reached out to Susan Shapiro-Lacks, who's the executive director and also a person with a disability, uh, from that group who helped write the New York policy as well as wrote a couple of articles about it. Um, and, and she was in support or agreed that this was a reasonable policy. Um, and then more to extend that as well. You know, in terms of, you make a great point about eco-ableism and, um, one pretty prevalent, um, article that I came across on the web, uh, is called grasping at straws, the ableism of the straw ban, which basically hits upon every single point you just made. It's written by, um, a woman with a disability named Erin Thalali, who also holds a degree in public policy, um, and works for, or has worked for the Center for Disability Rights and a variety of other organizations doing disability policy. So she and I sat down for about an hour and kind of discussed policy around this topic. Um, and I think she was very informative and, um, also supported this idea, uh, which we've seen across the country, New York, the entire state of California, Rhode Island. A couple of cities here, Somerville and, um, uh, I forget which other city in Massachusetts. So I, I want to say that your points are well taken and they were the, um, these thoughts and concerns were all taken into account with doing the research. It was some, probably the most in-depth research I've done as a city counselor and was done and was informed by people and, uh, with disabilities as well as disability advocate association. So I want to really make that clear that I wouldn't have moved forward with this without having that information or that support. So.
And, and Counselor's there, is it possible for you to, um, just pull up the language since you're sharing right now?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that was, I, I just want to make that clear because I think when we had the previous discussion, I, uh, I think, hold on, so let me stop my sharing. So let me get to that. And I think the discussion we're having here is definitely similar to what's happened in other cities, you know, where this is so, um, let me find this. Sorry. Technology. Okay. So here's the language. Do you want me to read it or what would be best, Mr. Counsel Derby?
Uh, sorry, I was muted. Why don't you, why don't you just go through the, the new section on, on, on straws? Um, just so we're all on the same page. So everybody.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, uh, some of the numbers got messed up. I apologize. So, um, no retail food establishment shall dispense, distribute or sell a beverage straw in conjunction with the sale or service of prepared food except upon request of an individual. If a food establishment that provides straws upon request also provides self-serve, single-use items for food consumption such as utensils, napkins or cup lids, it should post a printed sign reading, straws are available upon request in any areas where the single, ser- single-use items are provided as well as clearly displayed at the place where the food is ordered. Signage shall be developed in consultation with the board of health to maintain consistent legibility and messaging across all businesses in the city. All food service establishments shall maintain a sufficient supply of single-use plastic beverage straws that are not compostable as well as a sufficient supply of compostable straws. If a person specifically requests a plastic beverage straw, such food service establishments, establishments shall provide a single-use plastic beverage straw that is not compostable, free of charge and shall make no inquiry into the reason for such request. Nothing in this article prohibits retail food establishments and their employees from prompting patron, patrons to request straws as described in item one above. And here's where I ap- I apologize, the, the number got messed up. Nothing in this article prohibits customers from using their own straws of any material for personal use in a business establishment. And then any violation of the section is punishable as detailed in section six, six dash 21 dot four dot three. Also a quick note, um, the state is looking at single simp- similar legislation and this, uh, the state language is similar, but simpler. It doesn't go through all these other, um, these other similar, uh, there are these other stipulations, just FYI. I wanted to add those in because there's, it should be by request by anybody universally, no questions asked. And, um, again, the, the Massachusetts Office on Disability, which is the, the parent group that basically supervises, um, all of the municipal commissions on disability, such as our own, um, had, didn't have any concerns with the language. And then again, uh, to disability, um, advocates with, um, who work on public policy also vetted the language as well. So, um,
I appreciate, I appreciate you reading that, Counselor's there. And, and actually, you know, Grayson, one thing that you said that cued me to think something as I was looking at this was, um, the bendable straws, it's almost seeming like those are more accessible as opposed to a straight straw. And we don't have anything right now in the city that requires restaurants to give people bendable straws is, yeah, I'm just wondering if that's something that, you know, as, as someone who, um, you know, if we're trying to advocate to make sure that we're being accessible, like right now, there's probably multiple restaurants in the city that don't have any sort of bendable straws. I mean, is that something that would be worth, you know, writing into this? So it, those, those plastic straws, if they were available would be the right type of straw?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you asking about that. And yes, um, ideally, I think if you're going to have something where straws aren't just readily accessible for anyone to just grab, so that they can make their own decision about potential straw use, uh, then yeah, like having the bendable straws is ideal because there's a number of, I mean, there's Having the bendable straws is ideal because there's a number of, I mean, there's, there's a number of reasons why, but. You know, the one that I can think of, um, one of my friends who utilizes a power chair, right? Has the ability to to move their arms and all of that, but because of the incline in which they have to sit in the chair. If they were to try to use a straight plastic straw with anything, it would just wind up being a mess. And so um, I think altering this to specifically say, you know, the plastic bendable straws. Is going to to make this more accessible and I guess one, one other note, just while I'm talking. I understand that you've done a lot of of research on talking to people. My concern here, and again, as as somebody that's done this for over a decade, that's worked with a a number of different organizations. That works for Department of Public Health right now. One of my concerns here again is the fact that if people are having to ask for a straw, there is a. A specific type of ableism that is is going to be rooted in forcing people to ask for these. And I understand that this is kind of like the best of both worlds, like compromised kind of situation. But I would like to pose this to you, um, somebody comes in in a wheelchair and they utilize. An iPad for um, augmentative communication, so they're able to to push icons on their iPad to to communicate. If they're in a position where they have to go up and ask somebody for a straw. They're going to face a lot of ableism, they're going to face people being like, oh, hurry up, like, why can't you, you type faster, why can't you ask this faster? And it is going to subject people to more microaggressions like that, or again, somebody with anxiety, somebody who. Has selective mutism or who was autistic and non-verbal, those kinds of things that were not a small group. Those of us who might struggle to actually ask for these. Um, and so I would just pose the question of if this was, say, your adult child. Living in East Hampton while you live somewhere else and they're going to college and they're potentially facing this ban. That would make their lives harder, uh, how would you change this to make it less difficult for them? Would would just be my last takeaway from that.
Good, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, and thanks, Grayson, that was very well articulated and I appreciate uh, hearing your perspective on all of that. One thing that comes to mind, and this probably doesn't work for every single restaurant establishment or whatever, but I like, there are restaurants. Around here where the straws are just in dispensers. And so if you feel like you need a straw, you can just grab one. If you don't feel like you need one, I I never drink with a straw for whatever reason, um, like. You just don't, you know, and so uh, and I, and I, I personally prefer that because I don't like when people, you know, give me, you know, plastic I'm not even going to use. So is that like a, you know, it would that be a, you know, I I'm I'm sort of just brainstorming here because I'm trying to reconcile everything that everybody's saying. But is that like an, is that an option or an alternative that could have some sort of useful place in in all of this?
Counselors, Eric, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, so actually, am I, sorry, I can't find my my controls, am I, like, do you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So that's actually what happened in Rhode Island, uh, Counselor Peak, so they they had had a, they had had similar language where. It was going to be kind of a behind the counter type of thing. Um, and and with, you know, kind of like a a non-automatic inclusion, everyone makes a request. And they ended up, um, I'm not sure if it was for this reason. Or if it was more just the hospitality and restaurant industry, but they ended up including language. For basically like straw dispensers. And personally, from my perspective, I think it serves the same purpose, I agree with you that that the the goal of this is is reduction. And so to your point of like, just every time you're given a drink, you're handed a straw, that doesn't, you know. The the issue is, there's, there's two issues, one is plastic reduction, one is accessibility for 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 people. And so as long as it's available, but not maybe automatically given, but to Grayson's point, uh, easy to access. I think that that makes sense.
Good, thanks, uh, looks like Counselor Rothschild.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was wondering, I have a question about the um, the part. Why if there was other single-use items available on a table, why would the straws not also be there with them? In this, in the language here? What's the reasoning by that?
Yeah, Counselor Zare, do you want to answer that?
There isn't, and I think that could be taken out, I think that speaks to uh, Counselor Peak's point. And I think that that was, that was borrowed just from some established language from elsewhere. But it, I agree, it doesn't really make too much sense, um, it's, and it's kind of burdensome in terms of the language. So uh, I mean, especially for the purposes of what we're talking about. With our current ordinance where every, where all these utensils are going to be biodegradable anyways. I I think that you, you, I think your point is well taken, that either it just doesn't have to be there. You know, either upon request or by um, or accessible uh, by by uh, by, I don't know what the word would be, but I think that makes sense.
Access and self-serve, I mean, I I agree with um, like Counselor Peak's point after like our last meeting, um. Brad Riley had gone to Costa Rica and he sent me a picture of a straw dispenser in Costa Rica. You know, Costa Rica is kind of ahead of us on many environmental things. And they had like a really nice sign on the, on the dispenser, basically reminding people of you're making an environmental, you know, like. Think before, do you really need, do you really, you know, just an environmental message, kind of, and it made me think today, like driving around and seeing the. Idling signs that kids have made, it'd be a really nice connection maybe with kids or, you know, a scout troop to make signs to go on this, on the. Single-use products in our town to just create education and culture change. But when I was talking this through with some people too, they were just saying, kind of to some of Grayson's points too, is that. Just kind of picturing that scenario, like you get in line at Tandem or whatever, you get your food. And you know there's single-use stuff to access over there, and you get over there, and then there's not a straw, and then there's like a long line, and then you have to try to like. Find your way back in to get a straw, so I think it would make sense that if they're, to have dispensers where people. Can opt in or opt out of taking one, and I'm also just curious, because I think a lot of times when we talk about it, we talk about it in the context of Tandem or smaller than our places, maybe that. We frequent a lot, but you know, I I would probably posit that most of the straws are given out at McDonald's, Burger King's, Cumbry's. And um, I've been reading, like, I guess McDonald's does have. Straws on request a lot of places, or they have paper straws now, or so. Um, I'm just wondering how much reduction is done in those places like. Where most people are going to go, that's, I'm just, in terms of, you know, expanding the reduction of plastics. I was just kind of thinking, I'm just kind of thinking in those scenarios. How does that play out, but I think that I would be supporting more of just like the dispenser there and maybe like, you know, a message reminding people that if you don't need it, maybe don't take it.
It seems, it seems like, you know, if, if we're, if they're going to have utensils, which we, we already have required to be compostable or. You know, not plastic, um, then it makes sense to to have. Straws available there too, so I think that that's, that's pretty acceptable, all right, Grayson, I see your hand.
Yeah, so um, question then, are are all utensils required to be uh, biodegradable, compostable? Okay, uh, do we know the ingredients that are in these things and have we listed them? Like, are are restaurants required to let people know, hey, the spoon, you know, like, we, we have these biodegradable things, the spoon is made of corn. So if you have a corn allergy, maybe you don't use this biodegradable spoon. Because to me, um, that, that's a major problem, right? The same kind of things that happen in biodegradable straws happen in biodegradable utensils. And um, you know, my best friend has a corn allergy, she can't do any of those biodegradable utensils. So um, my recommendation would be that, yes, the, there should be spaces where there are. You know, bendy straw, plastic bendy straws available, compostable straws, there should be signage that clearly delineates which ones are which. But that should be the same for utensils, anything that you have the compostable, biodegradable versions of. There have to be plastic versions of because there are too many people who have allergies. You like, you could have someone have anaphylactic shock and die in a restaurant because they're utilizing like biodegradable utensils, we don't want that, right? So having the options presented, having clear signage presented, I think would be a major way to improve this.
Yeah, and I I would say that, uh, you know, at least my experience with uh, you know, the kind of. Not plastic utensils is those are stamped for liability purposes for the companies that create them. They're, they're stamped with uh, any allergens, at least the ones I've seen. So I, because I imagine that would be, that would be a nationwide, national, like, massive problem. For these companies for liability, I mean, if you're selling a product that's going to kill people if they put it in their mouth, that's going to be a big deal, so.
Well, you would think that, but that that should also be the case with these straws too, and there's, there's again, no regulations around that, so. Um, and I guess the other thing to point out is, even if they're stamped, like, like what, uh, uh. Those things are really small, right, and they're usually the same color stamp as the, the spoon or the fork or whatever. From the perspective of somebody who might have a visual disability, they're not going to be able to see that. Or, you know, somebody who has difficulty with color contrast, like, they're not going to be able to see that. So again, I would still say some sort of signage would probably be beneficial.
Counselor Peak.
I think that this is, I mean, it's, this is why it's good that we get feedback from outside, like. I, this is, yeah, that's obviously like a pretty serious like health hazard, um. And I guess I need to do a little bit of research um, into what our actual options are there. Like, for instance, are there compostable options for these things that won't kill like non-zero number of people in East Hampton? That would be like, that's something I I just don't actually know anything about, so I think. I I'd like to get educated on that before we um, move forward too much.
I'm muted, so Counselor Zare, I saw you raise your hand and then after you raised your hand, Lindsay raised her hand, so I can, I'll just go in that order.
Yeah, I mean, these are good points, it's definitely not something I had seen with with the research around this, I'm not saying that that's, it doesn't happen, I just, it's the first I'm hearing about it, so. I want to, um, I'm trying to think who I could talk to about, I have a few resources that I've connected with over the course of. This project, uh, so I could definitely reach out about it, um, I don't know, so. Grace, and to your point, at least in terms of the utensils, I think those are, those are certified and I have to look at. I don't know if part of those certifications has anything to do with um, being allergen-free, so I'd want to, I have to do a little bit of a deep dive in the. ASTM certification process, um, and I do appreciate the the brainstorming here because I I don't see any issue with. Basically, again, the straw dispensers, um, you know, being really any different than than a request and it also. May place lots of a burden on the business, it is interesting that there's a few businesses in town. That are doing this, you know, like, there's a few that were mentioned that already have. You know, like the sippy cup lids and you have to go up to the counter for a straw, or at least there's kind of a just behind the counter container, I think, but um, this is helpful.
Counselor Rothschild.
I was, I was just thinking, um, for those listening into our meeting, I think. Um, it seems, you know, we're having this big meeting about straws and it's obviously important, but it's also just a good exercise, I guess, of noticing how many different perspectives and. Issues that can arise when we're, you're talking about anything, um, I was just, uh, was, oh, in terms of the compostable. Where do people compost these, so, you know, these, the things that were requiring to be compostable? Do we have a facility to compost, or is that work we need to do as a city? I mean, I think if people are getting things to go, likely those compostable things are ending up in the trash and causing just as much damage as plastic, so. That's just, I mean, I'm not against, I'm just, that's more work we have to do, it's, you know, and we can't, and just so people, the public that are here that. Know if it's compostable, it's not, it's still going to be just as damaging to the earth unless it's in like an industrial compostable facility. So it's not like we've, you know, there's more work to do, that's all.
Counselor Zare.
Yeah, Counselor Rothschild is a hundred percent correct, that that is the, that, that, while there, it's not. They're, they're similar too, but not exactly the same as plastics and landfills, they, they. They take a very, 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 very long time to break down as opposed to not breaking down, but it's still basically essentially the same thing. And so, yes, the next kind of step is um, is uh, commercial composting facilities. But what I will, what I can share with my colleagues, um, and that was a great question, Counselor Rothschild, is. Kind of what's happening next is there's some regional conversations with some other cities, uh, Northampton, Amherst. I can't remember who else that are doing things like that, where now they're basically like. What Counselor Rothschild has said is that, okay, great, like, but we need to have commercial composting facilities and so. You know, I think that that is something that this body can also start talking about is figuring out how to make that happen, so yes, a hundred percent true.
Yeah, and and just for the, um, you know, I I do some work with Grow Food Northampton and uh, I went to the um, Mass Farm to School Institute. And that is one of the big topics of, you know, basically industrial composting, uh, and there, there is a facility on. And I think it's South Deerfield, uh, and and so we have them in our area, we have them in Western Mass, it's just a matter of the um. The access to municipalities to be able to send it there and and making sure that they have the capacity to handle it. But that's something that's being worked on by the Mass Farm to School Institute, because trying to get schools to be able to send all of their compostables. To these industrial facilities, because a lot of schools are switching um, to compostable uh, containers as well. Okay, so, well, I I know that we have, we have more topics to discuss, so um, you know, I think just out of. Looking at the time, I think this was a a good, robust discussion, I think we've got some food for thought, you know, I think we'll um, have a a chance to kind of digest some of these questions and and. Counselor Zare.
I like the fact that you said both food for thought and digest when we're talking about utensils.
Yeah.
But was that purposeful? I'll work on, I'll work on the language based on the recommendations here, um, as well as uh, do, do some uh. Grayson, stick with me and you'll get all the bad puns in the world, um, I um, I'll, Grayson, if you can send, like. If Counselor Gomez can give you my email and maybe reach out to me so we can collaborate on this and I can get some of your feedback, I could, um. Yeah, I'll work on some language for the next meeting.
Sounds good, awesome, well, I I appreciate everybody's comments, I appreciate everybody coming and speaking to this. This issue, it ended up being more robust than I thought it was going to be, so that's great, and I see that we have our city planner here. So Jeff, we would love to, I know that you had invited some people to discuss, uh, you know, the affordable housing pieces and the overlay and and um. And so let's, let's jump right into that, if that's okay.
That's okay with me, if it's all right with you, um, thank you, um. I just wanted to, I guess, just take a quick step back, so, you know, originally, there was a packet submitted by Counselor Peak. Um, and it was in the August fourth, uh, city council packet, which um, you know, dealt, it deals with the Smart Growth Overlay District. And we also had, um, there are some proposed amendments to a planned unit development for affordable housing, so. It follows along with the discussions of. So it follows along with the discussions of many people kind of really still working hard to support more, the creation of more affordable housing in East Hampton. So that's kind of where it started on August 4th. And the original request for the Smart Growth was some, some tweaks to the, to the zoning section that were identified in the downtown strategic plan and then again in the housing production plan. And a map change, which would pull the existing overlay district over the Pepin School on Park Street. And then, you know, just to recap, is that the, this committee met on September 9th, kind of the first, the first reading of it really. And at that point, the committee in the city got a letter from the owner and the owner's rep for, for the Tasty Top parcel to be considered as part of the amended 40R overlay district. So it kind of, we started us off with that conversation about exploring other properties. During the last meeting, we did identify that the Tasty Top property and some others right on Northampton Street were originally proposed to be in the 40R back in 2009. Ultimately, they were taken out. And this, in 2010, the city adopted the existing 40R, which kind of covers the downtown and the mills. And then there's two other like outlying areas. And the committee asked me to kind of, I guess, reach out, like what I did is I reached out to a couple of the landowners in the area. So, so you can see a couple of people from the Cernac family, which is the parcels across the street. You know, I emailed them and included the old maps from 2008 and they said that they would like to at least be considered. And then I, and I can put up a map whenever the time is right, but I, but on Northampton Street, as you're going towards Northampton, near the intersection of Florence Road, there's some parcels on the right. And it, it's vacant parcel. There used to be a restaurant there a long time ago and it kind of backs up on Highland Ave. And so that property is owned by the Gaul family. And so they responded that they do not want to be included in the consideration of this. They, they said that they have done a fair amount of existing planning based on the existing zoning. So then the last parcel that was a specific request to look at was a different area. But on, on Main Street, going towards Southampton, it's 385 Main Street. It's owned by the Fedor family and it's currently, you know, listed for sale, which was also included in the housing production plan. And so, so the, the owner's rep or the Realtor said, yes, they would like to have that property at least considered. So in doing all of that, I, I went back and I found some information that was pretty useful. The committee talked about how we have a downtown district and some criteria for that. And then we had the, the two outlying areas that I mentioned are called neighborhood business. And those have specific criteria. And then in 2008, 2009, there was some criteria established for the highway business corridor, which would have been the Route 10 parcels. So I think I can put it up on the screen and I do want to kind of like, get some conversation about these parcels going and then maybe, maybe, you know, depending on the outcome of that, that'd be the next meeting is to just provide that language, the criteria. And one thing that I remember Counselor Peak was asking about is in the highway business, you know, what types of uses would be allowed? And so that, that is, that is, that was fleshed out at least then. And we can kind of revisit that moving forward. So that's kind of a quick summary. And I don't know if it makes sense for me to put up some more maps or if you want to hear from people who are on the call who you haven't heard from yet. And, you know, Counsel Derby, I don't know how you want to handle it, but.
Well, I appreciate that introduction and I appreciate you jogging my memory from 2009 when I was working on this before. I, you know, what I would like to see is I'd, I'd love to see what you found. And then, once we take a look at these maps, then I, I'd be happy to open it up for people to, to ask questions or make some comments.
Okay, so.
So you should be.
Perfect. So let me just figure out my Zoom situation here. What I'll do first. Sorry, I'm not muted, am I? Give me one second to, no, give me one, give me one second to find the, the map that I had pulled up during the last meeting. Because I think it's really kind of the best jumping off point for the discussion.
And then that's great.
I had it queued up and now it's gone, so. Okay. So, so this is a document that I have found, it's, it's kind of just labeled something that a mayor's packet from 2008. And I guess for, for, you know, recalling this, this is when the city was first adopting all of its 40R regulations. So there's a lot in here about what is the smart growth. And, you know, it's, it's really this idea that it's a state program that encourages municipalities to create dense residential or mixed use, mixed use smart growth zoning districts near transit stations in areas of concentrated development such as existing city or town centers and other highly suitable locations. You know, at least 20% of the housing units created in this district need to be sold or rented to incomes that make 50%, $50,000. So that's like, it's a capital A affordable housing. So this might be a little outdated. I think the important thing is that it's an, it's an opt-in option. So, you know, the existing highway business zoning that we have, for example, in this new area we're talking about, would, would still be an option for property owners to pursue. But they could also select kind of the, the 40R options, which, you know, the idea is that it's going to require 20% affordable units, but they'll be allowed to build more units. And that's, that's the incentive that comes with this 40R. So there's more to dig in with that, but what I wanted to show was some maps. And I, I did find some additional maps, which I would like to package up and provide to the committee once there's consensus on, on kind of moving this forward. But on this map here, you can kind of see the, the peach color encompasses the mills and the downtown. And that's, that was adopted. And then the green color is the neighborhood business. And again, that was adopted. And what we're kind of talking about tonight, to just get a sense, is the purple area here. This was what was proposed to be the highway business 40R district. And just for some quick reference points, you can see at the top of the page is Highland Ave. So then the, these, the first small parcel at the top, this larger parcel, the second and the third. This, this area here is the area in this jagged line. This is the parcel, the parcels that are owned by the Gauls. So these would be ones that, you know, we would at least preliminarily be excluding because the owners requested that we did not be included. But what that leaves is this, these larger parcels here, which is really kind of the, the multiple parcels owned by Tasty Top, you know, occupied by Tasty Top. And there's the Burger King lot is included. And so sometimes you overlay existing things. And then across the street, Northampton Street, are two or three parcels that are owned by the Cernacs. And I, I think, you know, something we want to talk about is these last two parcels here at the intersection are currently listed for sale. They're being listed by the Canon Real Estate and those are owned by Cernac. So I believe those, and we can double check this, but I believe those are in the highway business district now. So we might have a conversation about expanding over there. In terms of, I see a question. I think in terms of the proximity, these, these are, you know, this is our next closest area to the downtown. So it meets kind of these, there's a bus route. You know, it can be walkable. And I think there's visions, you know, in the future of making it even more walkable from the downtown. There were some baseline information prepared about the developability of the parcels back then. And so we would have to review some of that. This kind of goes over the three sub-districts that were proposed. You know, it, the highway corridor mixed use, you know, at that point comprised 37 acres. And I think it'd be slightly less if we, if we were to exclude the Gaul properties. And then if it's okay, before I, before I see Counselor Zaret's question, I just want to also flash up. Excuse me, did the screen change on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So just for a quick reference, I just want to kind of at least show this, which is, this was the 2008 version of the zoning that, you know, there must have been committees. I think the ordinance committee and planning board probably saw this version. But I just wanted to kind of show that the way it would work is, I gotta go up a little bit. The way it is structured just generally, and we can, as I said, we can certainly talk about this in more detail. But you have, across the top are the highway corridor mixed use, the downtown mixed use, and then the traditional neighborhood village. And then along the left-hand side are the uses. So kind of by, by going through these, you can start to see where there were some decisions made about types of uses that would be allowed or not allowed. And the way we do zoning is that we want to encourage certain uses in certain areas and not allow them in others. And so kind of just quick example, this, the, the one, the fourth one down, multifamily residential units over four. So a little bit larger building with four or more units. It's got plan approval, which means it's allowed in the highway corridor and in the downtown business. But that type of building, because it's a little bit bigger, would not be allowed in a traditional neighborhood village. And, you know, we would, this would be an exercise we'd go through in more detail. But kind of going down here, you have some other examples where you have convenience store, which is a P. And so that's just permitted. So, you know, that would be, that they wouldn't even need to go to the planning board. It would just be expected in that neighborhood, also in the downtown. And then you get a plan approval in neighborhood, the neighborhood village. And then just for examples, just one more would be the supermarket. So, you know, it was anticipated to be plan approval in the highway business, plan approval in the downtown and then not allowed in the neighborhood village. So it's like the area out by like Brick Street. So you, you wouldn't really want a supermarket out on Brick Street. So there are some dimensional requirements and things like that that we could certainly get into. But there were questions about this last time is, you know, we would need to consider the highway business. But there is quite a bit of a foundation to, to start from if that's what we, you know, if that's what the committee kind of chose. So I think with that, I'll stop sharing the screen and answer any questions or provide more information.
That's great information. Thanks. Counselor's there.
Just quickly, because as you know, that when we start talking about landowners kind of dictating how we zone raises my hackles a little bit. So, two questions. One, I'll ask them both. You can answer them both. So one is, is what would the disadvantage be to a property owner if they were, if they were within this district? So in other words, you had mentioned in, in one case that there were certain development plans for a certain parcel and they're requested to be excluded. And then I guess two, is there, is there precedent for basically requesting the city not to include a parcel in, in the zoning change? I'm just kind of curious here.
I mean, I guess, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if there's precedent, but I think it's a conversation piece that we kind of are embarking on right now. You know, it's, we're being responsive. I think that's one really important thing that I, I just want to express in terms of property owners asking to be included. I think it's kind of normal. You know, these zoning amendments are, are either like really just derived from a plan and we just want to do them as a city. Or they're, they're kind of requested because they're important for some purpose, whether it's a property owner who owns the business property or a homeowner. And that historically, if you looked back, there were, there's a lot of zoning amendments that are generated by requests. I mean, that's, and I think we, we kind of did this before with, with other amendments in the highway business with Canvas stuff. But this, then it just embarks on this job of vetting them and making sure that, you know, the group, as a group like with the ordinance and then the group is the planning board and group is city council have been, made a thorough review of the, of the entirety of it. So that's, there's definitely precedent for that. I'll just speak to my, I mean, there was one where the chickens like way back when, something popped up in 2010. I actually came to ordinance and was like, I would love to be able to keep chickens at my house with a special permit. And there was a long discussion and it got passed. So there's a lot of precedent for that. Then, their first question was disadvantage. No, I don't, I don't think there's any disadvantage because this is an optional. It's an opt-in. So we would cast the overlay over properties and it, it dictates nothing. It's more that what we see is it offers flexibility. And especially in this time where we have the housing production plan and other plans that are saying we need housing. So here we are, kind of again, just kind of looking at our zoning and this would be, this would be an opportunity to create more housing on, on parcels that are not developed. And that's kind of a key, key piece that, that we want to explore as, as a town, city. So hopefully I gave some response to that.
I think you did. And let me chime in real quick. I mean, the way I took it was that, you know, in order for us to be, do our due diligence, it makes sense to check in with property owners. As far as I'm concerned, you know, if, if the, if the property seems like it would be appropriate, then, you know, I, because it doesn't offer any sort of disadvantage to their property, I would be completely fine going ahead, even though they wouldn't necessarily, they're not requesting it. And I, I would feel weird about leaving it out because, due to the request because of the nature of that property. So, I mean, and if they develop it in a different way and, and it, and it's not applicable anymore, then so be it. But, you know, but I, I feel like that, that is a, a important piece just to make people aware of like where, you know, the steps that we're taking at this point in the, in the process. But Counselor Peak.
Yeah. And I, I think you basically said a lot of what I said. I don't, I don't personally want to get too bogged down in the weeds of this process step right now because I think there's other important things we need to come to an agreement on before we really discuss this. But just broadly, I think that for me, the, the important thing is sort of what parts of the city are appropriate to do this in. And then all we're doing is giving people the option. If they don't want to use that option, that's fine, but that property could transfer to somebody else at some point. And I don't want to have to come back and rezone again because of that. So just process wise, I think, you know, I'm definitely, I mean, I'm absolutely interested from, from property owners and in what, where, where they think is appropriate and where that fits with us. But I really think that what we need to be focusing on is where do we think this is appropriate? Not which specific landowners want this because there's just too many parcels in the city to, to sort of frame that conversation like that. When properties change hands, somebody might not want to use it now. And they might want it in the future or a future owner might. But I think that with that aside, it seems like the, the real question here is if we're going to do this for highway business, just to, it looks like what, what the next like big process step is going to be is just that, Jeff, that table that you shared, just going through that and just confirming that the 2009 council's general thoughts about that lineup with our thoughts on it. Because there might be places where they don't. And so that, that just seems like, that seems like the big, like next step is that. And also just sort of confirming like, yeah, are we, are we talking about this? What about Route 10 heading towards Southampton, you know, and, and so on? So that's it for me. Sorry, that was kind of rambling.
No, 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 it was fun. I think, I think it was, it was on point. Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm happy to open it up if anybody has any questions at this point. You know, now that we've seen the map and we've seen some of the, the original proposal from 2009. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, I guess, I guess not at this moment. This is not the last opportunity. So Jeff, do you, do you have anything else for us to take a look at?
No, I, I don't have anything else tonight, but I think, you know, the couple of things moving forward. I, I think Tom said it fine, that we should look at what was proposed in 2009 and go through that. So like the next, the next meeting might be a little bit more of like a real work session on that. The, I don't want to lose my train of thought. I think one thing I was going to say, I don't know if this is what I was going to, I don't know if this is what I meant to say. But at a, at a point when there's consensus here, we do need to follow the process to send it to the planning board. And that's an important step. The, the thing I did, you know, review is the 40R district gets, it has, it has kind of a parallel review process with the. Um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, so DHCD at the state. So um, I think I just want to make us all aware that there's a parallel path. Where once we have um, you know, like a, a set of regulations that we're comfortable with in properties, then. Then we send it to the planning board, and we also send it to DHCD. And we just, I just need to map that out. Where we just don't want the final vote of city council to happen before DHCD kind of. Gives it a blessing of some sort. And I, I don't know for sure, but the, the, it was approved by DHCD. So the, the process kind of ran parall-, parallel. This must have been Stewart when he was here. So. You know, there was a letter in the file um, in two thousand nine from DHCD saying they approved it all. And then at some point, you know, it was, it was not, the council didn't put it all forward. But to me, that's a good sign that we kind of, that there was some level of vetting. And I guess I'm just trying to, trying to draw a contrast to um, the, the pulling the overlay over Pepin. You know, I had a quick conversation with the administrator about that. And they said that that could, that could likely be a, a very minor change, just approved administratively. But I think clearly with this one, where we're creating a new district, there's some. Calculations, and there's some additional maps that we would prepare, and there's, there's a little bit more to do to get it to DHCD. But I think the idea is that it will all be useful information for, for probably at the planning board level, when there's joint hearings with ordinance and playing where that, that information would be available for, for that group. And then the final decision maybe to send it council would happen, you know, once it's off to DHCD. So I just wanted to map that out a little bit.
That's not, that sounds great. And Tom, I'll get to you in one second. Jeff, can I ask two questions? Do you know if there are still incentives available through the forty R program um, through the state?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's good. That's all I need. And second question, um, I know that when we did this in two thousand nine, we um. Did a little bit of a, a, a deeper dive than we normally do with design standards. Is that still pretty? Common? And is that something that we can, um, maybe you can include in the packet, like some sample design standards that we, you know, that. We can at least take a look at to say, hey, if we're going to be developing these larger parcels of lands, what do we want it to look like? How do we want this to kind of? Set the tone for the different districts um, and, and that type of thing. And so correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, you're not wrong. You're correct. And what I, what I didn't get the piece together, and that'll, yeah, I think, I, I don't want to sound, I don't want to sound scary, but I think the, the next packet will be kind of big. But what I'll try to do is break it into chunks. There were, there were proposed design standards. And what I just didn't get a chance to figure out before this meeting is if they had any that were specific to downtown and highway business. Um, I, I suspect there was. And then what ultimately happened is the highway business stuff dropped off, and we ended up, we do have design standards. You know, for this, for the smart growth, but I need to lift up, you know, I need to lift up whether the highway business was included, and do we need to consider that? But I do think you're right, that we do need to consider. That as part of moving forward. That'll be important.
Awesome. Thanks so much. I appreciate it. Counselor Peak, sorry to make you wait so long.
Fine. Uh, two questions for Jeff. Uh, first one, can you send uh, that PDF that you were just showing us? Can you just email that over so that, you know. Ahead of that meeting, we might be able to review it and uh, come up with some thoughts about what we like and what we might want to change, just individually, of course, not as a group.
Yes, I'm, I, so the document, again, the, the one I have is this, it's just labeled mayor's packet from two thousand eight, I have that. And I have the one I, the, the zoning amendment packet. Which has the, the uses for highway business. And then there was one other one, which was the discussion about design standards. So. Um, let me just look into that, and I'll just preface like whether it includes highway business or doesn't. And then, you know, what I would love to do is put that on the website, too. Um, because that's, that's what we're doing right now, is we're kind of, we're kind of deciding whether this is part of the, the packet to move forward. So if I can work with Barbara, I think posting that information would be good. And then if there's any new information that comes with the next meeting, we'll post that, too.
Awesome. The second question. In order to transmit a request to DHCD for approval, does the full council need to take any action?
When I was reviewing it, it didn't, didn't look like that. Um. So I think what they, that it looked like to me when I was reviewing it was the criteria was that you have draft, you have draft language. And you have the district areas that you're considering, and then there's some calculation. So. Just for reference, what they do is they take, if you take all the parcels. That you're including, that's one number, like so with thirty-seven acres or whatever it is. Then there's a real kind of rough um, calculation of lands that are wetlands or otherwise not developable. Which lea- leaves you with the developable, um, the developable square footage. And then, so that's a chart that they want. And, and to what Counselor Derby said, that developable. Then translates to how many units, and it's like a really rough calculation of how many units would, could this possibly generate? And then that creates some calculus for an incentive. So there are a little bit of. Number crunching and kind of putting in the packet together, but I would, I would bet that after the next meeting. We will have clarity at what we kind of want to try to do, and then that would be the basis for sending something to DHCD.
Awesome. Works for me.
Okay, great. Um, oh, and I saw your hand up. It, it looks like it's down. Do you, did you have anything, or?
Sorry, my mute was being weird. Uh, I had the same question you did. I was just trying to understand if there were kind of fundamental. Some fundamental differences in the language between the two overlays, and it sounds like there, there would be. I mean, not. Significant, but design standards and such. So I, I think Jeff answered that, and there's more time to talk about that, so.
Sounds good. Is anybody um, on, anybody else on the Zoom have any questions or comments about this topic? Okay, it's. I should, I, I need to learn to be patient, just in case. Trying to, don't be afraid of the silence, right? Okay, uh, I don't see any. Um, so, I, I mean, it seems like we're. I, I think we're at a, a decent spot to maybe pause and then, and regroup next time with all this information that we're talking about. Um, the only thing I would ask Jeff, and, and I don't know if this is even possible, it might be worth talking to Barbara. I, I have a faint recollection, the reason why the highway business. Piece fell out was because of opposition from a counselor that lived on um, Highland Ave. Uh, and I think that that was the, I think that was the main push to get it removed, but I would like to have that confirmed. Um, just because it would be, I'm trying to remember, I had a ba-, a newborn at the, at the time, so I'm, I'm not. The, you know, I probably wasn't very well rested uh, during these deliberations, but I was there. So um. But that's, that's, yeah.
It's, it's totally in the realm. I, I started to poke around. The, the documents that I think we have access to would be the minutes. And I, I started to, I saw, I saw the minutes of the ordinance and planning board joint hearing. But the minutes were, they just weren't very detailed. Um, but I, I, I know they're available. And then I did, I did start to ask Barbara about like the minutes from the city council uh, vote. So that was when they voted, like there was amendments, so they, they put forward the whole amendment. And then there was a motion to amend out certain things, and so that, that does exist. And I think that would be, you know, those are the types of documents that I'll, I'll compile.
Awesome.
And we'll see what they show.
All right, that sounds good. That's, and there should be some VHS video of that, too, somewhere.
Really?
Whitebrook, when we were at Whitebrook, so. Um, okay, well, uh, unless a, anybody else has anything they want to add, I'm, I'm happy. I feel like we've had a full docket tonight. Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Um, I don't know if you um, uh, I, I sent over minutes. Today, I don't know if you, either of you saw those.
I saw them, but I didn't have a chance to review them.
Okay.
How are we, how are we on our um. Uh, up against our window? I mean, I, I, I feel like we should be, we should be fine away.
Yeah, yeah. I, there were some from the last bit. I, I, so you'll just have, we'll just have more to look over at the next meeting. I just wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence.
No, I, I saw that they got sent. I just didn't have a, a time to read them. So apologize for that. That's my fault. I'll ta-, I'll take the blame. Um, but other than that, uh, unless Counselor Peak, do you have anything you want to? Okay, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
It's not.
We didn't have a second.
Sorry.
His motion.
I retract my. I apologize. It's not substantive, but if the, this committee seems to meet on Tuesdays. Right? It seems like that's a pattern. Would I, this, this time um, for like seven PM was really helpful, because I am coaching my daughter's soccer team. So. If, if, when you're scheduling, I can make any Tuesday, especially if it's, if it's like seven-ish. I just wanted to put that plug in, because I know it's hard to communicate with you guys sometimes, but that would be my only request, and I, I think I can make any Tuesday if it's a, if it's just a tad later.
Well, definitely, we'll definitely, um, keep that in mind. And God, I dread the fact that the clocks are going to be turning back at some point in the future, but uh. Yeah, we'll definitely keep, keep that in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, thank, thanks for that. All right, Counselor Peak.
So moved.
Okay. All right, we have a, a motion in a second to adjourn. I will go Counselor Peak.
Hi.
Counselor Zaret.
Yeah.
And I will vote yes, too. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Bye, everyone.
Take care.